May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Greenberg.
Here.
Mrs. Bacon. Mr. Laney.
Here.
Mrs. Matura.
Here.
Mrs. Case.
Okay. Next on the agenda is approval of agenda. Dr. Bales.
Thank you, President Matura. Items approved by consent will not come up for discussion during the meeting but will be approved when the agenda is adopted. This is possible since members of the governing board receive the agenda along with backup materials at least 24 hours prior to the meeting and have time to review and consider all items. Prior to the agenda being adopted, members of the governing board or audience may ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda and brought to the floor for discussion at the appropriate place on the agenda. I would like to offer the agenda as posted.
Does any member of the governing board wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Does any member of the public wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mrs. Bacon, may I please have a motion to approve the meeting agenda and recommended consent agenda items G1 through G19?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is governing board's statements. Mr. Laney? Anyone? Mrs. Case?
I'm just hoping if anybody is paying attention to this meeting tonight, that you're having a wonderful summer and that you're relaxing. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is call to the public. We are about to convene call to the public, which allows the public the opportunity to address the board. Although state law does not require that we hold a call to the public, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community about concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. Call to the public is not designed to be a discussion. Due to Arizona open meeting law, the governing board cannot respond to, discuss, or take action on items brought up during this time. However, staff members may be directed to get back to you to address individual concerns. Additionally, I want to remind you that in lieu of speaking tonight, you may choose to submit written comments to the board by completing a public comment form on the district homepage. All comments submitted by noon today have been provided to each governing board member and to the superintendent's office in advance of tonight's meeting. Tonight, we have one person who has submitted a comment card prior to the start of the meeting. You will have three minutes for remarks. As a reminder, the point of this and every board meeting is to accomplish the business at hand and to be able to do so openly and collaboratively. All in attendance are expected to observe our meeting rules as well as rules of politeness and decorum so that we may serve as an example to our students that issues can be discussed in a respectful and civil manner. Please state your first and last name when you come to the podium. Our speaker is Jennifer Ariza.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Ariza, and first I want to say thank you to each of you for the time that you put into your positions here. I really appreciate it. I know personally it's very difficult to make each one of these meetings, and you put a lot of time into what you do. And tonight, I stand here as a concerned parent in the Paradise Valley School District, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. My concern as a parent in the district is the education and welfare of our students. And as I stand here tonight, I want to declare that pornography should not be allowed in our schools. Pornography is most often thought of pictures or videos of nudity or sexual acts, but the depiction of those sexual acts in animated content or in literature is also pornography. The American Bar Association states that exposure to pornography harms children and youth by normalizing sexual violence, creating unrealistic expectations for intimate partners and relationships, and increases the risk of addiction. This happens whether it's a graphic video or an explicit passage in a book. There's lots of research done and many articles that people can go and take a look at in further detail. Please note that pornography is used to train and desensitize people and increase demand for human trafficking. Porn users often seek to act out what they have seen or read in pornography. Have any of you known someone who's been a victim of human sex trafficking? Do you know that Arizona is home to the largest human sex trafficking recovery program? And do you know that we are taking elementary-age children into this program? There's a lot of discussion about the effects of pornography on children and young people. There's lots of studies. I even looked at one recently that the Australian Institute of Family Studies did with their social services department, and their research showed a couple of key things that I wanted to highlight for our board. Pornography can use, can, pornography use can shape sexual practices and is associated with unsafe sexual health practices. Pornography may strengthen attitudes supportive of sexual violence and violence against women. If we know that pornography in literature is harmful to children, and we know that pornography is a gateway to human trafficking, then I have to ask each one of our school board members, why would we approve any pornographic material to be in our schools on your watch? In closing, I want to just note that this is the last school board meeting of the 2021-22 school year, and I would like to ask each member of the school board to do some research into the effects of pornography on children. And please note that it's our job as citizens in our community to stand up for the welfare of these children. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is superintendent's comments. Dr. Bales.
Thank you, President Matura, governing board members, cabinet, and guests. Tonight in our mission moment, in PV schools, we engage, inspire, and nurture students through high-quality instruction, meaningful and educational opportunities, and dynamic learning experiences. These experiences are made possible by our staff, and we'd like to add you to our staff. PV schools, we hosting a job fair on Tuesday, July 12th, from 8:00 to 12:00 p.m., 8:00 a.m. to noon, at the District Administrative Center right here. And interested job seekers will receive personalized one-on-one job consulting with human resources staff, be guaranteed virtual interviews, and receive application support. More details are available on the website, pvschools.net later this week. Speaking of our website, you may have noticed a few changes over the last couple of weeks, and on June 3rd, we soft-launched our new website. This was a monumental task that came together as a result of stakeholder feedback and staff dedication. While the site is now live, we are still working to make updates to pages and content. It's a work in progress. Please be patient, but I think we can all agree this new reimagining of our sites is more accurate, more accurately represents the fantastic work going on here in Paradise. Because web addresses may have changed, please remember to update your bookmarks. For those interested in reading a summary of the new changes, click on the quote, "The new pvschools.net is live," article located in the slideshow at the top of each school and district homepage. And those are my comments tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is items for approval, and the first item is consideration and approval of the 2022-2025 superintendent's contract for Dr. Bales. May I please have a motion to approve the 2022-2025 superintendent's contract for Dr. Bales as presented?
So moved.
Do we have any comments from the board?
Thank you for staying on. I mean, it's been a tough year. So I just wanted to thank you for your commitment, your dedication to our students, for working with our community and with the board so well to get us on the track we're on.
Mrs. Case?
Um, I, we just finished a retreat today, and a board retreat, and it was interesting with the various opinions board members have, and we have lots of various opinions. And Dr. Bales just kind of took it all in and put it in a nice little package and made it understandable, and that's really hard with some very hard-headed people. So I appreciate it and your ability to work with all of us. And I have to say that the communication we have with you is extra special. It has improved. I've been on the board a long time, and I just really appreciate the level of communication we have. So thank you.
Mr. Laney?
I would like to express thank you too. And just a clarification, a board retreat is not what you think it is. It's just a big, long meeting. But yeah, I appreciate all the work you do and your candor in our conversations, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mrs. Greenberg?
Also quickly, our board retreat also was held over there in the DAK East West, so we did not even go to an exotic location for our all-day meeting. Just wanted to stress that too. But kidding aside, thank you. I think Julie said it best, not just for returning, but for returning for another three years, and that we, all or some of us, will get to see the strategic plan to fruition. So thank you.
I also extend my thank you. It's been great working with you. I know, we talk about how hard different years have been, and, you know, each year has been harder than the last. And so to, to have been at the helm this past year has been a big job, and appreciate all the, the work and the hours and your team and all of the work that went into making this year go the way it did. And appreciate you being, being at the helm of, of your team and, and working with each of us. And it's been, it's been a good year. And so, yes, and thank you for your willingness to continue along this journey of excellence. With that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. So.
I would like to, I want to thank the board for your support. It has been a tough year, but together, we have come together and handled a lot of difficult situations. And I want you to know that my commitment, my love for this district continues, and I'm pleased to serve. And with all my heart, I look forward to great things to come. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is to consider, discuss, amend if desired, and if deemed advisable, adopt Resolution Number 519, approving the governing board's argument in support of the special maintenance and operation budget override election. Dr. Bales? Do you have a comment with this, or should I continue?
I'd be happy to frame it. This is as a result of the last meeting that you took action to call for an election in November, and this is the board's opportunity to submit a letter of support, an argument of support for that election. And presented to you is a draft that I think a couple of you put some thought and effort into. It does need to remain at 200 words, and it's just at 200 words. So if you want to make revisions and add, you'll have to delete equally and fairly. So with that, turn it back to you, President Matura.
May I please have a motion to consider, discuss, and amend, and adopt Resolution Number 519, approving the governing board's argument in support of the special maintenance and operation budget override election as presented. We will discuss, amend if needed.
So moved.
Okay. Any comments? You have the draft. You received the draft ahead of time. Any word-for-word changes that you might want to see on here? Mrs. Case?
I have a silly question. Does this stuff at the bottom, is that included in the 200 words?
No. The answer is it does not include it in the 200 words. The way that we submit it like this, it is not. If we were to list officers and list more than two officers by name, then the additional officers would count towards the 200, as I understand it. But as we have written it as a governing board statement, it does not.
And I, for those of you who don't have this in front of you, it's just a signature line from the governing board. So I would want to thank, thank you for, is it okay if I speak, President Matura?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you. Outside bounds there. Thank you for working on this. I had one comment, and since you were at 200 words, we don't have to say, we don't have to change it. But state funding, the first sentence, state funding for public education remains well below national averages. I think that com, the norm, I know what you mean because there's all different categories of national averages, but I don't, I'm just wondering, does like the average person know that it's, or should it just say national average? And I totally know what you were getting at. So I'm gonna be quiet now.
If we change that to singular, then we need to add the word "the," right? Well below the national average, and we do not have room to add the word "the." So leaving it plural, if we don't mind it being plural, actually solves that problem.
I mean, I, I think, you know, we, we put averages for the exact reason is that there are multiple ways to consider funding. So, and which I know you know. But I also, I, you know, I think averages works. And we don't have to add the extra word.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so all those in favor of approving as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is public hearing for truth and taxation notice of tax increase and public hearing for fiscal year 2023, school district annual budget and expenditure of insurance proceeds, followed by consideration and approval of the fiscal year 2023, state of Arizona, school district annual budget expenditure of insurance proceeds. Dr. Bales?
Thank you, President Matura, governing board members, cabinet, and guests. Tonight, we will conduct the truth and taxation and the annual budget of expenditure of insurance proceeds hearing. Following that, we will present for approval the fiscal year 2023 annual expenditure budget. Ms. Barrigan will lead us in that recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Bales, President Matura, and governing board members. This is the presentation outline for this evening, and it is an exact duplicate of the presentation from the June 2nd board meeting. So there's no new information in here, including the fact that there is still no state budget. But we are closer, sort of by default, because June 30th is approaching, but also by effort on the part of the legislature. So they're getting close, and in fact, just before the board meeting, I received a text that has some positive information for, for education in the state budget. So hopefully, we will, we'll get there shortly. Just to remind you, there are lots of assumptions in this budget because when we prepare a budget before the state has completed their budget, we don't know all of the details in terms of inflation increases and district additional assistance and so on and so forth. So we have assumptions in here, but we have the ability to revise the budget in December, or frankly, at any time we wish, but required by December 15th, and then again, required on May 15th. So we're presuming that the average daily membership is staying stable. The estimated inflation increase of 9.2%, I don't think we'll get that, but that's for the purposes of ensuring that we adopt a budget that allows us to have sufficient capacity. District additional assistance estimated at an inflation of 2%. That's not been inflated before, and they are making discussions about inflation for district additional assistance. That's all related to the MNO budget. Classroom site fund per student funding decreased just by a little amount, $25 per weighted ADM to 708. As I said before, I was expecting a much larger decrease because we had the one-time payout this year from classroom site fund that provided a larger amount in this current fiscal year. So I would have thought we'd have a much larger decrease in the per-weighted ADM amount. But, so we're still getting $708 for that, which is good. That continues the Prop 123 funding in the MNO budget, and then there's an estimated special education weight for the categories listed there from .093, which was just increased last year from .003, or the prior year, I should say, and increasing it next year to .3179. So we will take every little bit. We do have a large number of students that are in that category, so that would result in some additional funding for certain. Then with expenditure factors, we base the expenditure factors off of the, the fact that we'd probably just received 2% in inflation funding and stabilized ADM, and based off of that, we were able to do a 1% salary increase, .83% of that being out of MNO, and .17% out of other budget balance carryforward funds, to be determined as we see how the year flushes out. We also did the one-time return-to-work stipend to be paid likely out of ESAR at $1,000 based on FTE, as well as the retention stipend of 3.34% of the base for payout also likely to be out of ESAR. We have the hard-to-fill addenda for community education aids, special education aids, and bus aids. The pay adjustment that we did for bus drivers, dispatchers, and routers to support the efforts of that department to increase their staffing. And $665 in increase for the employee medical insurance will be taken out of the carryforward that we have or the balance that we have in prepaid medical. Because we have that increase in classroom site fund, teacher performance pay will be increased from $4,631 to $5,274, even though we did have a slight decrease in the per-weighted ADM amount. We did have a larger balance from this year because of the one-time payout that we're able to make sure that we can add some money in the classroom site fund for teacher performance pay. And then as a reminder, our minimum wage increase is $12.80. That increased in January of this year, January of 2022. We'll have another increase in January of 2023, likely to be getting us pretty close to $14 per hour. With our budget outlook, this is a reminder from last time as well, that the district is experiencing a budget shortfall for this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2122. That was largely due to approximately $14 million related to the enrollment stabilization grant. That is a grant that all districts received in fiscal year 2021 to stabilize enrollment when they were seeing significant declines due to COVID and parents keeping students at home and things of that nature. So we moved what was about $14 million worth of regular MNO expenditures into that enrollment stabilization grant for 2021. And when the budget was prepared for fiscal year 2122, those expenditures were continuing expenditures. They were not reduced from the district's budget, but they were not considered when planning 2122 and moving that back into MNO. And so now that that has been recognized, we need to address that, and I'll talk about how we address that in this current year as well as moving forward in a moment. Additionally, professional growth was approximately $300,000 more than projected. Our overtime is more than projected by nearly double at this point, and a lot of that was due to transportation, school support staff, and other areas that had high vacancy rates. Additionally, fuel expenditures were higher than the prior year by about $405,000, and utilities were a little higher than projected from fiscal year 2020, 2021. We do have funds in, carryforward funds essentially, in Medicaid, classroom site fund, medical prepay, indirect cost, and MNO budget balance carryforward, as well as potentially some funding from ESAR that can be used to resolve the one-time budget shortfall in fiscal year 2122, our current fiscal year. So we have that taken care of. Moving forward into 2223, the budget was planned for before the recognition of the $14 million deficit, so we have to address that for 2223, and then moving forward into 2324. As mentioned, we will engage with our district stakeholder leaders in a process to address that long-term budget shortfall. And we have our first meeting planned for July 18th. We'll be meeting weekly and then hope to have a recommendation to the board in and around the September timeframe. This is the summary of our basic operating budget. These are what we generally consider our basic operating funds, maintenance and operation, classroom site fund, instructional improvement fund, Medicaid reimbursement, and indirect cost. Sometimes people ask what indirect costs, so just a reminder, those are the costs we can charge to our federal, federal grants for the administration of those grants, basically an administrative fee. So for those operating funds, we're a little above $300 million. With our capital funds, we have our unrestricted capital of almost $25 million. 6.4 million of that is because we have a district additional assistance override approved by our wonderful voters. We also have a bond that was approved by our wonderful voters. We'll be able to do about $48 million in projects moving forward. Many of those are smaller projects that we're seeing, not a lot of rebuilds or any new school construction or anything of that nature, but lots of necessary projects, as well as adjacent ways. And I have more information about adjacent ways shortly. We have our federal and state grants. Our federal grants are not normally $62 million, but we do still have some ESAR funding, so that's why they are a larger number than typical. That also includes our title funds, as well as IDEA, which funds some of our special education costs. And then we have some additional state grants at a little over $5 million. We have our debt service that's paying off the bond, so we can spend the bond out of the bond account, and then we pay off the bond out of the debt service account. We have community education, which supports our preschool and before and after school programs, about $9 million. Food services will be at about $10 million. Insurance proceeds at about $200,000. And then there's a conglomeration of a lot of other smaller funds at about $16.5 million. It is important to understand how our budgets impact the tax rate for our taxpayers in the district. This lists last year's primary and secondary tax rate and the total tax rate for both of those at a little over $5.80. And for 2223, that will decrease slightly by about 23 cents to $5.57. So it's a decrease in the tax rate, both primary and secondary. Moving on to truth and taxation, it is a very small portion of the district's budget, but it is required to have a special hearing for that, for whatever reason. Since 1997, school districts have been required to disclose that because there's anything that's outside of the budget limit, they want established in the education funding formula. So in this year's PV schools budget, the only item we have is for adjacent ways. There's only a few items that can be considered for this, and we typically have adjacent ways in our budget. As most school districts do, it takes care of expenditures that are related to adjacent portions of the district. So generally for us, it's fire lane, and you'll see this year, nearly every project is related to fire lane within the schools, repaving them, providing gates for them, things of that nature, and providing safe ingress and egress to school districts, so safe entry and exit into the school district properties. This year, that amount for adjacent ways will be a little under $2.7 million. And the legal requirements for this are, first of all, to determine if the truth and taxation hearing is necessary, and whenever you're doing anything in adjacent ways, even if it's $1, it does require the hearing. We published that notice in the newspaper, which was published on June 9th, and I'll show you essentially the verbiage from that, if you didn't see it for yourselves in the paper. We then hold the pub, public hearing, which we are doing now prior to adopting the budget, and have a roll call vote from the board to approve the increase. We then notified the Property Tax Oversight Commission of the hearing and the vote. This is the verbiage that was posted in the newspaper, and it is the legal required verbiage that has to be in there. You'll note the amount of $2,676,203, and how that will affect the tax, affect the tax rate on $100,000 assessed value of a home at $6.29. So because it's a one-time levy and requires So because it's a one-time levy and requires the indication of what the tax rate is, there is specifics in the law that say it's an increase from $0 to $6.29. Most people would think that that meant we had $0 in adjacent ways last year. That's actually not the case. That's the amount from 1980, when the formula for adjacent ways was established. And every district at that point would have had $0 in adjacent ways. So in fiscal year 2122, the tax was actually at $2.21 on $100,000 assessed value of home. So the actual increase is only $4.85 on $100,000 home, or on average, 34 cents per month on $100,000 home. And we know most values, or most properties in the district are not 100,000. They're a little bit more than that, so you can multiply it by that amount to determine what that would mean on your property value. These, again, are the adjacent ways project. As I mentioned, most of them are fire lane-related. So even the demo and paving with stabilization for those first seven schools listed are of the fire lane. We're doing a new fire lane fencing at Mountain Trail, and then the very important Hawk Light across from Shea and Shadow Mountain that we are working with City of Phoenix on. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions on adjacent ways or the budget in general.
May I please have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 school district annual budget and expenditure of insurance proceeds as presented?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? I would just like to say that I appreciate your presentation. It's very, I feel that you present it in a way that is easy to understand, and hopefully, the public appreciates your effort in making this an approachable information because I think you do a very good job of making the information accessible to people. So thank you for doing that because that's an important part, being transparent with our public and making sure people understand that we're using funds wisely and how and where the funds are being used and that we are following state statutes and doing things as prescribed. So thank you for ensuring that we continue to do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Chisman, may I please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Greenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Bacon?
Aye.
Mr. Laney?
Aye.
Mrs. Matura?
Aye.
Mrs. Case?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is acceptance of gifts and donations. And we appreciate all gifts and donations to our district. We know that so many of our community members do provide donations to all of our schools and are always appreciating donations that come into our district. I just wanted to highlight one tonight. Wildfire Elementary School PTO was able to donate $1,500 to their school to offer substitutes for testing days. So that was very helpful to their school. Thank you. And may I please have a motion to approve gifts and donations?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is presentation of Paradise Valley Unified School District classroom spending report for 2021. Dr. Bales?
Thank you, President Matur, governing board, cabinet, and guests. I just wanted to emphasize that this presentation that Ms. Barrigan will do next for us is for fiscal year 21. And I know she'll emphasize that, but it's important to note that this is a year ago, right? It finished one year ago. But this is the timeline that we have in presenting this information by statute and district and state reports. Ms. Barrigan?
Thank you, Dr. Bales, President Matur, and governing board. Yes, the information is about a year old now. Part of the reason for that, the Arizona Attorney General, or excuse me, Auditor General doesn't come out with this report until March of the subsequent year, so we've only had this information for a little over three months. And then additionally, we have some comparison data in here that compares to national averages from the U.S. Census Bureau report, and that information didn't come out until May. So we're waiting on that final piece of information so we could include that in here. So that is, that is why it is this late, but you can't change the information anyway. So it is what it is. And I will say, I'll get through this as quickly as possible for everybody because I know we're ready to go home, but there is good information in this report, and it's important that you all hear this, as well as our public. The classroom spending as a whole, you will see, is the blue, orange, and gray piece of the pie. And they consider instruction, student support, and instruction support as part of that whole classroom spending category. And total, we're at 73.3%, which is good. And I'll have some comparison data here for you in a moment. With non-classroom spending, we're at 26.7%, and that includes administration at 8.9%, plant operations, so really, our facilities work with our facilities department at 13.4%, food service at 1.6%, and transportation at 2.8%. To remind everybody, or inform them for the first time potentially, what instructional expenses are, this is a list. It includes personnel, so teachers, paraprofessional substitute teachers. It includes instructional supplies and aides. It also includes activities like field trips and athletics, as well as tuition paid to private institutions. That's generally for special education students where we don't have a program for them in our school district. Non-instructional expenses, we see plant operations and the various items included there. Student support, which includes counselors, nurses, speech and language pathologists, as well as other therapists. And I don't think most people recognize what all is included in that category, as well as an instruction support, which includes our curriculum director, sped director, master teachers, which is sort of a general overall term, and librarians and other things of that nature. Food service is pretty obvious in terms of what that includes. Everything related to our operations for food service and transportation is essentially the same. So this is the comparison data. And we will start with that first section of classroom dollars, which is just the instruction only, which for us is that 57%. So we have PVUSD, then our peer average, the state average, and then that national average information that we'd been waiting on. For our classroom dollars and instruction, we are higher than our peer average, as well as higher than the state average. So that is good news and important for our public to know. And we are significantly under the national average. If you look at the source for the national average below, that's from the U.S. Census Bureau 2020 Annual Survey of School System Finances. That is the report we have been waiting on. That is the most recent report that they have. So they're about two years behind in their reporting. And I want to emphasize that because we are comparing the PVUSD peer average, state average, with 2021 numbers to a national 2020 numbers. So I guarantee you, the national average for those 2021 numbers is actually even higher than that number, okay? Then with classroom dollars, which was those three sections of the pie that includes student and instruction support in addition to instructional expenditures, PVUSD is higher than the peer average and the state average, and we are below the national average. And we can't spend what we don't have, I think, is the point there. Then for administrative costs in PVUSD, we are at $864 per pupil. We are a little bit above the peer average, but below the state average, as well as below the national average. And you'll see the national average at quite a bit above the PVUSD costs, especially when it comes to a percentage. With instructional spending and district comparisons, this includes some of our peer districts. And that includes Deer Valley Unified, Dyce Art Unified, Mesa Unified, Peoria Unified, Phoenix Union, and Scottsdale Unified. These are folks that are in our peer group based off of the Auditor General's report. They do include some other districts as well, like Tucson and Gilbert, but because they're so really far away and not really the same as our district, these are generally the districts we compare to in the valley area here. Compares fiscal year 20 to fiscal year 21, and you'll see that our instructional spending is actually exactly the same as a percentage. And that is similar across most of the districts, but we do see some districts that increase their instructional spending significantly, like Peoria Unified, or then a Phoenix Union, where their instructional spending decreased by a larger amount. And that fluctuates, frankly, from year to year. There's going to be a year where we may be potentially decreasing that amount and a year where we may be higher than anybody else. It just determines the decisions that are made in the district for any given reason related to their budget expenditures. I will note, though, that of the districts that are on here, we are right in the middle of the pack at the 57.4%. When we consider all of the classroom spending, so those three categories, we did increase by 0.4%. So even if it's not going specifically to instruction, it's either going to instruction support or student support. And we are at 73.3%, which puts us just behind Peoria only on this list, and they're at 74.2%. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions on the Arizona Auditor General report. But I hope you see, there's a lot of good information about the district spending in comparison to other districts.
Ms. Barrigan, would you take a moment just to give a definition of administrative costs from the non-instructional expense side? Is it principals?
Yes.
As well as superintendent? And who else is included in that definition?
I had a slide. I don't know where it went.
I think it was on that slide, but that bullet got cut off.
Oh, I may have deleted that bullet. So instruct, or excuse me, administrative expense. Often, people think they know what that one means and think that there's only a certain number of expenditures in that category, but it actually goes a little bit deeper than most people know. So generally, that's going to be district office staff, including superintendent and cabinet. But beyond that, it includes our principals and assistant principals. It also includes our front office secretaries and any expenditures related to those areas. So most people don't understand that administrative expenses include all of those additional pieces.
And that would include human resources, business services, that all the people associated with those departments here.
The people that hire the people, the people that pay the bills, the people that pay the people, all of those important pieces.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone have any questions? Mrs. Case?
Thank you. You make something very hard understandable, so thank you very much. I appreciate that PV tries to put as many dollars as possible into the classroom. But I also understand, if you don't have a good principal, the school suffers. And that's the instructional leader on each campus. And so I appreciate that we try to balance all those things, help the students out in every way we can, but also, each school needs a good principal. So I understand how that all works. And I appreciate that we diligently try to put all the money we can into the classroom because that's where it happens. So thank you.
Mr. Laney?
I just want to be clear on the Arizona School District spending report, dollars per pupil. That's capped because of state law, correct? Is that what that?
Which?
The $5,607 for classroom dollars instruction only? I mean...
Matt, can you put the slides back up?
What I'm trying to get at is our budget is capped.
Yes, I think I know the question. I just want to make sure the slide's up for people.
Yeah.
This slide, correct? Yeah, so that is the amount we're spending per pupil. And it is, there is a direct effect on the amount of revenue that we receive for per pupil. So that's not our per pupil revenue. It's our per pupil expenditure, want to be clear about that. But we can't spend what we don't get.
Okay, thanks.
And that amount is sent by the legislature. We have no ability to change the appropriation that we get.
You do not, unfortunately. Thank you.
I was looking forward to this report because I think it's a really great reminder of what is not considered to be classroom spending, such as air conditioning to ensure that our students in Arizona can sit in the classrooms in August in our buildings. Buildings aren't part of the classroom spending, although that is where they are physically located. All of those things that take, it takes to make the district run, so many of these things, in order to get the students to their classrooms with our transportation. And I bet that part's obviously going to be going up next year with, we know, with gas. And that makes, and makes the averages look different. But when you understand where the money is actually going and how important it is, and all, it takes all of that to educate a student. And so, so thank you for presenting this in a way that reminds everyone of where the dollars are going. So thank you. Oh, Mrs. Case?
Does the amount on the slide that's up there, the 5607, does that include the MNO override?
It would include our MNO override, yes.
That, so that number includes that. It would go down without that.
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Before we adjourn, I would like to remind you that our next regular board meeting will be held on Thursday, August 4, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. Enjoy your summer. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.